I call this meeting the Town Council Board, which is fixed in for the invitation and remain standing with the people of the regions tonight on the page where we live by Mr. Joe Phillips. Our Lord, we thank you for this day and the opportunity that we have to serve this community. We ask that you would help us tonight, every deliberation, that everything that we discuss tonight be kind affection one towards another, that's respected opinion of each other, and those who have come to be with us tonight. We ask that at the end of the meeting, if we've done those things in the best interest for our community, we need the wisdom of the Lord tonight to help us to do these things and get yourself the glory and the honor after everything is done. Amen.
Let's pledge our flag. Attention, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice on all.
There's one.
Okay.
This one's mine.
Okay, y'all, we're all the partners.
Ready to go?
Ready to go. Okay, good to see everybody with us tonight. Thank you for coming. You have had an opportunity out first to review the minutes and the agenda. If there's, is there any, for the consent agenda, is there any item that someone would like to have pulled off or discussed separately?
I need to add one item.
Okay.
I need to add the FERDAAP grant cycle.
Under the FERDAAP, under the consent item.
Yeah, yeah, just add it to the agenda.
Okay. Then, under open equal five, this will be the FERDAAP, that's F-R-D-A-P. Any other changes, additions, corrections, deletions, that you're entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion. We approve the agenda.
We have a motion as our second.
A second.
We have a motion as second. Any discussion on the motion? How you doing, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Is that approved?
Yes.
And your book is?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Tyler Dunaway.
Thank y'all.
Good evening.
Good evening. As you mentioned, my name is Tyler Dunaway. I'm the partner in charge of the financial statement audit for the town of Wausau this year. And I've had the pleasure of working with Ms. Margaret for several years now. When I walked in the door, she said, "I love this town." And you can tell by the work. She does a good job, puts in a lot of hard work in keeping everything straight. We've had a pleasure of working with y'all. So tonight, I will just very briefly, because I know y'all have a lot of other agenda items, so I promise I'm not going to spend a lot of time. But if y'all have questions, feel free to stop me and ask, or you can call me, email me after the meeting if you have any specific questions I could help answer, and I'll be glad to do that. So we'll start out, it looks like y'all have the report in front of you on page one. Y'all turn over to page one. That is called the independent auditor's report. And so, in this entire document, this is the only thing that we as auditors at Carrick's and Ingram control. So the rest of the document is y'all's. This is our report that we issue our opinion on y'all's financial statements. And I just want to point out, the first paragraph talks about our opinion, and there's a lot of accounting jargon in there, I know. But it's the highest level of opinion that we can offer as a CPA profession. It says that we believe everything is materially correct in these financial statements, and so that's a commendable goal to achieve the highest opinion that we can offer. All right, so we'll flip over a few pages. The next section is called Management's Discussion and Analysis. This presents some comparisons to the prior year. It talks about looking forward. We'll be looking at page eight. And so I'll just point out a couple of the big changes on page eight. So you can see that a lot of things stayed pretty similar to the prior year, but there were two really big changes in the grants section. So your operating grants and contributions and capital grants and contributions. If you add all your grant funding together, it was down about $300,000. That's because in 2021, you had this really significant project right next door, or I guess right next door, with the fire department. And so there was a significant amount of money received from the state for that project, and a significant amount expended to upgrade the buildings and the infrastructure that the fire department has. And so that's something that you see from year to year. I'll talk about that again in just a minute. Grants tend to fluctuate. Sometimes you get a really big grant that does a lot of good for the town, and then some years you don't. So you want to see your taxes staying pretty even and going up. You want to see those type of recurring revenues being consistent. But grants will fluctuate from year to year. So that's a common thing. All right, so let's turn on over to page 10. So on page 10, this is the first statement of net position. And so this takes all of your funds that you have, and it aggregates them into one column for the governmental activities. So your gas tax fund, the street fund, and then the general fund are combined together, and then all your utilities are together. And so it's just a real high-level overview of the town. The biggest part of the statement is your net position. And it's why it's called the Statement of Net Position. And you get to that by taking your assets and subtracting your liabilities. And you come to what's left over after that. It's called net position. And you'll see that there is an unrestricted amount of net position that's a deficit. So it says you have more liabilities than assets. Well, that's something that's very common in the state of Florida. Anybody that participates in the Florida Retirement System Plan has that, because the net pension for the state of Florida has a liability. And so that's not something that's coming due next year. And y'all are going through the budgeting process. You're not going to pay off the entire $50,000 liability next year. It's something that'll come due over the next few decades, many, many years. And so anyways, I'd just like to point that out, because it's kind of scary when you see a net deficit. But that's something that everybody that participates in that plan has, and it fluctuates wildly. So in years where the market does really, really well, that liability goes way down. And in years where the market doesn't do well, that liability goes way up. So I'd just like to point that out, because any time somebody sees a deficit, they get a little bit concerned. All right, so flipping on over to page 12. This is your balance sheet. So it breaks out your fuel tax fund and your general fund separately. And whenever we're looking at governmental entities, one of the key indicators is that you like to have three months' worth of your expenses left over in your fund balance. So in the general fund, when you take all the assets that they have, and you subtract out all the liabilities, you want to see there's three months' worth of expenses left over. And you'll see that this year for the general fund, there's about one month's worth of expenses. So I know y'all are still working on building that up. I would encourage you to build that up to where you get back to having three months in your expenses, because you never know what happens with your tax base. Sometimes it goes down, and having three months gives you some flexibility to not have to cut as many things whenever the economy takes it down. All right, so let's flip on over to page 16. Oh, I apologize, page 19. So on page 19, this shows the revenue and expenses for your water department. And you'll see at the bottom of the page, whenever you take all the revenues of the water department and you subtract all the expenses, you'll see that there was an operating loss of about $63,000. In the prior year, there was an operating loss of about $86,000. So I know y'all worked hard to remediate that. So you decreased that loss by about $24,000 in 2022. So just encourage you guys to continue working on that, because at some point, you'll have to take some of the money for the water system and invest it back in infrastructure. And obviously, that takes having some money on hand. So just keep looking at that, whether it be seeing where you can cut costs where you can, or raising the amount of customers that are on it, or raising rates to where the water department supports itself. It's very important. All right, so turning over to page 40. I'll give y'all a minute to get there, because I know that's several pages. This section is called Notes to the Financial Statements. And in the notes to the financial statements, we try to describe anything that you saw in those financial statements that we just talked about. So we try to go into a little bit more detail. So one of the numbers on the financial statements we just talked about is your capital assets. And in this schedule right here, you can see how much was invested in those capital assets in the year ended September 40 of 2022. You'll see for the governmental funds, there was an increase of about $475,000. So your capital assets, your infrastructure increased by about half a million dollars. A lot of that was thanks to a grant that y'all got for the Possum Palace. And so it's a good indicator for the town when that number's continuing to go up. So your infrastructure, your assets, your equipment, they're not just continuing to deteriorate, they're continuing to reinvest in those items. And you see that happen with the governmental activities this year. On the water fund, you see that there was actually a decrease in your capital assets this year of about $40,000. Now, on the water, yes?
Let me interrupt you. Would you, when you get us on the page, will you tell us kind of what line you read?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Kind of time, I need to, I need to see those.
There's only like 100 numbers on here.
That's right. You'll tell them, tell them kind of what part of the page you're looking at.
Yeah, yeah. So on the first part, I was looking at the number that's about three-quarters of the way down. There's a line that says governmental activities, capital assets net. And there's a double underline. And you can just see that $475,000 right there. That's what shows you the increase. And then if you come all the way down to the bottom of that business-type activity section, you'll see there's a number that's a $41,000 decrease. So that's how much more depreciation you had of the water funds, capital assets, than you had investing in the capital assets for that year. And it's not necessarily uncommon that there's a decrease, because most of the time with your water fund, when you spend money on an infrastructure project, it's a big, big project. And so there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that are dumped into it in one year, when there's a grant that was received, or something like that. And so not necessarily uncommon to see that that's going down, because it's not necessarily a linear progression whenever you look at fixed assets. But just something to keep an eye on. All right? And then on page 63. On page 63 is a section where we issue any findings that we had in our work that was performed for the town. And you can see on page 63, there's only one finding, and it's related to segregation of duties. A lot of times it was small entities. There's just not enough staff in the office to properly segregate all of the functions that come in as far as receiving or dispersing. And so we do have some of those that we ran into here. It does not mean that there's anything wrong. It just means that best practice would have all of those key functions of accounting segregated. And I know y'all have actually worked towards that. Y'all hired a second employee that helps part-time. And so that's something y'all are aware of and working to try and resolve. And then on the next page, on page 64. Every year, we look and we see how much of your water was billed to customers versus how much was used. And there's always some kind of loss, because there's always a pipe bust, and there's always a flushing that's going on, or something that uses water that's not billed. But there's approximately 54% of the water that is used in the town is not billed. And so that's just something to keep an eye on. Now, obviously, there's some reasons for that, but nonetheless, just something to keep an eye on, about keeping that number as low as possible.
Mostly our splash pad.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so that's all I have. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Anyone from the council have a question? Let me ask a couple of questions.
Yeah.
We skipped a lot of pages.
Yes.
What will I find on the pages every year? We always do that, and Hilton probably always tells us, but we skipped a lot of pages.
Yeah.
Somebody asked me, what's on some of those pages? Is that more work product than it is anything else? And you just went to the consensus of what work product was and give us the bottom lines. Is that what we've just done?
Yeah, we tried to just hit the key, the key points. The big changes from year to year are what we try to look at. The big changes from year to year, things that are concerning indicators, like the water department having a loss for a couple of years in a row. We just try to hit the big-ticket items that we just want to emphasize to you guys.
And this audit is for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022?
Correct. So it's almost 11 months old.
11 months old. So shortly or after October 1st sometime, you'll start one for the year we're in now. Is it safe to say that we can live for an altogether different audit next year? I think all our grants are about gone, all micro monies are about gone.
We haven't started on the micro money yet. That's the, we've got all these grants out here. You know, we've got several million dollars worth of grants that are in works. We haven't expended any funds on those yet.
Okay, so they will be in the term of audit?
They'll probably not be in.
Even?
We'll have, two years from now, we'll have an excellent showing, you know, this grant.
So if we start spending those money next year, some of these numbers will still be up. They're artificial numbers. They're not real Wausau budget.
No, but our, like at the well system, what he was talking about, our infrastructure. We're going to replace all the piping at the well. We're going to put in a new submersible pump. We're going to get a new generator. That's going to, you know, go into raising our.
Assets.
Assets that are depreciating now.
Okay. I think just, just an opinion, if you can give one tonight. It wasn't but a few years ago that we was in what's called a state of financial distress, or something like that, as they had. And we were very, very hard to light the mayor and council at this council that's worked very hard to, how, where are we today in terms of our financial table?
Yeah, so we don't necessarily issue that opinion and say, yes, you are, no, you're not. But the state of Florida now has kind of changed that definition a little bit for financial emergency, to say that you have to miss a debt payment, or miss a payroll, or something like that to be in financial emergency. But those factors I pointed out, that the general fund only has about one month's worth of expenses left over, whenever you take away all the liabilities that were new at year end, that number needs to get higher. One month is not, not financial emergency, but it's not, you know, the best practice range of being three to six months. But then the biggest thing I would say would be the water fund, that's had two consecutive years of losses in 2021 and 2022. Just continue looking at that to getting that back to where it's breaking even and covering its own costs would be very important. But no, I don't think you're in a state of financial emergency.
And that should be better this year, simply because we raised the rates 35% for the 2022, 2023.
Yeah.
And we'll go another 5% in October, you know, for the October billing.
And that rate raise did not have to do, just for the record, didn't have anything to do with the water that we had go through this height, and didn't have anything to do with the, for people, it had to do with that formula that we had a few years ago in that. And our water revenue, I don't know if all of us know this, but we have raised a certain amount of revenue in the town to participate in saving, sharing, which finances most of our city operations. And that's part of the, part of our maximum business amount of, right there.
Correct. We'd have to do that on tax, which I'm glad I'm retired. We don't ever have to do that, or, you know, raise it with utility taxes, auto phones, propane, Mr. Carter.
Yep. Any party words of wisdom? Don't spend it with them, God.
Yeah, well, I talked to somebody today, and they said it sounds like a Dave Ramsey speech. I don't want to come across that way either. But, you know, like I said at the beginning, we work with a lot of towns and a lot of cities, and Margaret does a great job here. We always love working with her and working with you guys. And so we're glad to help you guys however we can. So thank y'all.
Thank you for having me. All right, yeah, I need to.
I got it.
Anyway. Okay. You're the last one to sign, it's her, it's she. like to speak to the council who has not signed in? You would like to speak, but you have not signed in. Okay, who will begin?
Uh, one.
You may sign in, sir.
Please.
If you want to speak. Okay, anybody who's going to sign in, we'll start with Hannah Perez.
Here goes, sir.
Hannah.
Hello. My name is Hannah Perez. I've spoken here before, as you mentioned. And today, I'm here to support the voting for the tobacco-free public parks policy. There was a law that was, that took effect on July 1st, 2022, allowing local leaders the right to now set their own smoke-free policies for outdoor shared spaces, such as public beaches and community parks. Instead of one statewide policy for Florida's smallest towns up to its largest urban centers, this change allows local leaders to set policies based on what works best for their local communities. Smoke-free public places policy prevents people beginning, from starting to smoke by changing social norms so that is not seen as an accepted behavior. Changing social norms so that Florida's youth are not exposed to smoking as an accepted behavior is especially important in the ongoing mission to stop overall smoking rates. Another important reason for stop, for making tobacco-free public places is because of smoke, secondhand smoke. Secondhand smoke is associated with thousands of deaths each year. There is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke. And around the world, 1.2 million non-smokers die each year as a direct result of secondhand smoke. Another important reason is for the environment. Across the nation, cigarette butts are by far the most littered item in the country. Cigarette butts are harmful if ingested by children, pets, and marine life. Reducing cigarette waste is an important public health step, because cigarettes are not biodegradable. And the plastics and toxin chemicals in cigarettes and their filters can be harmful if they are, if they enter the water supply. In conclusion, policies restricting tobacco use in public places benefit the health of the communities by reducing tobacco use, protecting youth, and decreasing exposure to secondhand smoke. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Good job. Thank you, Hannah. And I think you're probably with here to see what we're going to do with an ordinance tonight on.
Thank you.
I think that's what it is.
She's a little nervous, sorry. But they've got an order.
Show it to. That's down under the FERDAAP, because some of these may, we want to kind of look, a chance for order there and go down and look at that ordinance now with the council. I'd like to do that. Okay, with everyone in. Okay, let's go down, Matt Fehr, to your presentation, and let's just wait and have that ordinance right now.
Tonight is the final reading of ordinance number 2023-01, an ordinance of the town of Wausau, Florida, concerning tobacco and alcoholic beverages. Providing for the prohibition of consumption use of tobacco, tobacco-derived products, electronic cigarettes, liquid nicotine, and all other nicotine delivery systems, and alcoholic beverages in town cars, providing for sustainability and providing for an effective date. We had the FERDAAP hearing on it. We had the first read, then now this is the final read for adoption.
Okay. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the ordinance and have any questions on it? What's the pleasure, the council?
I think we should adopt it.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
We have a motion as second and discussion on the motion. Just for the second discussion, I believe that SWAT said that you would provide signs or posting at our public parks and things like that. Can we work with you on wording on that, because I want to be?
We've got some selections in here.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see that one. I'm sorry. We'll, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah, I think we voted on that last month, which was a woman.
Yeah, we want to be visible and include all those things you said, vaping, and snuff, and chewing tobacco, and the whole thing there. I think that's what.
Do they include alcohol?
Alcohol, that's alcohol.
We've got a couple of alcohol signs down under the pavilion, but we need some posted like at gates and entrances and things like that. We don't, if it's not brought on the, if it's not brought on the property, it won't be considered on the property. So I'd like to see us do that. And I guess Tim will put those up when he comes, but we can work with him about.
I think they've been, y'all put our bottom posts, we put them up, or y'all put them up?
We can put them on. You just tell us where we want them.
Okay. When you get ready to contact someone, some of us can go ahead, okay? Yeah, okay. Okay, we have a motion as second to adopt the SWAT proposed ordinance on alcohol, on tobacco products. How you doing, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Sports now?
Yes.
Sharebook she is. Thank you. You did a good job, Hannah.
Very much.
All right.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Mayor and City Council, for letting me speak to you tonight. Most of you who know who I am and of my heritage, of course, my name is Joe Phillips. I live at 3538 Washington Street. That's the home of my dad for several years. And my granddad, and his wife. My grandfather, Omar Phillips, and his wife, Lucille, my dad, and mom, and stepdad, Joe, have really been involved in our community through the years. And I'm glad to be back here to be involved again. I wanted to speak to you about a couple of things that I know you can't answer to that, but I thought I would offer. I want to be involved in our city, and have already become involved. I've joined our fire department. I've joined our development club. And I've just been driving around the streets. I follow Mr. Waltonham around as he drives around looking, I drive around looking too. And talking to people. And some of you have seen some public requests that I've made, because people are talking. And I'm like, I want to find out what the facts are. I don't think the facts support all the struggle that people are having. So thank you for your transparency to give me data, because I think data speaks to what the truth is, rather than just the way we feel. So I wanted to ask if you consider two things, and I'm sure your lawyer would have to look at this. The first is development of maybe a volunteer force in our, in our city. You don't really want things like the development club and the fire department to be closely related to your, the city, because then they become involved in all of the sunshine laws and, you know. And so I thought about all the different ways to present this to you. And I've checked on, been reading through different city councils around the state of Florida. Some cities our size, some cities larger. And they, and many of them have developed a volunteer organization that allows volunteers to have a formal, a semi-formal relationship with the city. And looking at work orders this last year, something as simple as somebody to deliver trash cans when people ask for a trash can, so your worker could do what he's trained to do. Simple things. I'm not sure exactly what all that would encompass, and that might be a relationship we have to develop and bear out, right, with the lawyers, you know, how far can we go? But I'd love to see us, you as a city, consider that. And I'd love to lead that up. And given that opportunity, I would literally walk around the streets of Wausau and ask in every home, would you be involved with me? Some will say no, some will say yes, and then some won't show up when they do say yes. But I know. But, uh, I know this is not a simple task. I know y'all have been, and many of y'all have been in Wausau, involved into politics and council and trying to get things moving in Wausau for 30, 40, 500 years. So I know you don't turn this, but I'd love to see us continue moving in that direction. And I appreciate, like you said, that, um, this city council and the leadership has pulled this city back out of some, uh, low spots financially, and as Margaret indicated, I think even the next two years, it's going to look even better. Uh, so thank you for that. The second thing I'd like to ask you to consider is, uh, would you allow some sort of a community input, involvement in the design and decisions for, uh, the possum ballots and things like that moving forward, so that when they come to fruition, the community is not totally surprised and say, why didn't they do this? Why didn't they do that? Uh, things like that. So just love to, uh, maybe two separate things, possibly the same thing? Uh, that was just, I'd just like to ask you to consider how that might, my relationship might develop, uh, over the coming years, to provide you some extra help, um, trimming around the fire hydrant, simple things, uh, that can be done by, I think, volunteers and leave your staff to do those things like dig up and replace water meters or those things that, that your staff have to do. So thanks for the chance to talk to you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Can I address the community involvement?
One of us will.
Okay, go ahead. You want to?
Well, does anybody from the council?
Do I need to say anything? I'll say it because.
Anybody want to address or ask or have conversation, you know, with Joe, buddy stands here, before we, we will address the two items already.
Sure.
In just one.
I know you can't answer that tonight, but just wanted to get it out there for you to consider.
We can't, uh, can I speak, can I speak with the council? Because we, we've got a launch in a new council, and, and some of these things that we are even involved with now started before some of them came on board. As far as the volunteer committee, we have to have one for every grant, so people need to have input on the possum paddles, the fire department, everything we do, we have to have, uh, public, uh, input, have, have a public committee. Sometimes that's actually just a standing committee, we just go back to whatever the last grant was, where you serve again, and they do.
Sure.
Maybe we need to repeat that, maybe we need to change faces, so, uh, glad to hear that we've got a new face, or a whole face back in town, uh, so, all that. Now, as far as volunteer, I like the idea. I'd like to see this one, six o'clock, you somewhere, hey, this little town over in Panhandle, Florida, has got this volunteer, uh, corps, and they're out there and they're supporting the city, they're supporting the council, they're doing things like that. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think that's something worth pursuing. And looking at our budget this year, and for a few minutes, we want to look at our budget, look at our budget, if we, we're going to need things done that we're not going to be able to power to do or continue to keep people on to do and some things like that, so, uh, uh, I think there's merit in the proposal, and if, if we have someone on the council that would agree to meet with Joe, or we can meet together in workshops with Joe, or I think with Joe, he will help us to do this, uh, and, and I'd like to see you present something back to us, uh, and you're right, I think we'd have to meet with our attorney, we don't want to, we don't want to volunteer to incur liabilities and things like that, yet I think it's a more of a suggestion.
A follow-up to that is that I, I don't know what the proper way is to communicate to you, uh, if I could communicate one at a time or if I need to send others. I don't like gotcha politics. I'm never going to stand in this forum and talk to you about something that we haven't, you and I haven't spoken about before.
Appreciate that.
And so I appreciate an opportunity, uh, maybe I'll just talk, come by Margaret and talk about what's that best communication pattern to you. Glad to meet with each of you individually or representatives as you, as you desire. I look forward to a lot of that over the next year, even if there is no volunteer.
Yeah, I'm certainly not the attorney, but I'm, I'm going to tell you, I, that, that any of us are, uh, because we're being elected officials, we're susceptible to being approached by individuals, uh, we can't be together, we can't discuss anything that's going to be coming to the council for a vote, uh, or some things like that, we can't discuss our vote with each other and all like that, but if you have access to us because we are your elected legislators, if that happens, if that's.
And I'll discover that through Margaret, how, how to best do that, if that's okay with all of you. All right, thank you, appreciate the time.
Okay. Uh, Sam Sheffield, Mr. Sam.
I hope you give me the most time you can here to talk to me like you're talking here. I'm joking.
If you.
I promised three minutes, don't you walk me that long. I enjoyed it, but if you want to give it, I wouldn't, I can't do much wrong around here. I better sit, but I'm interested in what you say.
Come on, talk to us. Yeah, there you go.
Sir?
I said, come on, talk to us, if you want as much time as he had, if you were talking as good as he did, make as much sense as he did, we'll listen to you.
Yeah, I'm trying to make some sense. I want to start with the water balloon festival, no, that's it, the possum festival.
Yeah.
It was a success.
It was.
That's, that's the first Saturday in, uh, in, in August, you had people everywhere, and I enjoyed it. I enjoyed it. But the reason I'm up here, first of all, I want to say thank y'all for just being y'all, you know? God is good, I know that. And, uh, I'm standing here on faith and hope that it might be in God. But when I say might, that is what the Bible says, might be in God, but my hope is in God. That's where I am now, I'm 85 years old, and I said, my hope is in God. If you believe, say, if you don't believe that might be in God, check, check up your first people, in, in that first verse, you'll see what I'm talking about, where it said might be in God. You can do a lot of things, it might be in God, but my, my hope is in God now. I want, first of all, I want to point out that I've been working on, uh, a program back, Veterans Program, Memorial Day Veterans Program, back in May, last week in May. It was a success, morning and stuff. Check the end of that out, check the things out, found out that it was five men that lost their lives in Washington County. Three in our, in the, in the, uh, can't think like I used to, y'all have to forgive me. Three men in Chippewa, which is our, where the courthouse is, let's say that, we know what, what, what Chippewa is. Two other men was in, in, uh, and, uh, over there in, uh, can't think like I used to, over there on the riverside.
Yeah.
Mexico, they, everybody know what I'm talking about, the riverside over, you know, for now, on the side of Holmes County.
Carrville.
Carrville, two out of Carrville, none out of, what, none out of, none out of Vernon, none out of the rest of them. Two out of Carrville, three out of Chippewa. And I haven't closed it out yet. I guess you're wondering why the flags are, you know, you see those flags? You, you see a flag there when you get that, one of Sheffield Road, you got these three there, and supposed to be, uh, three more, two more flags down the road. Somebody stole one about the park, but that's okay, I have no argument about that. But that's why the flags are there. It represents each one of those men that gave their life in the state of Florida. And, uh, that person that gave his life in our community, we had one that gave the lives in our community, the other two was Caucasian jumper, but the one that gave his life, they were 20-year-olds, his name was Ernest Sheffield, Ernest Earl Sheffield, he was the one that gave his life. He was the only one in the metro family of Jenny Sheffield, which is, she, she was a, she was an Indian lady, and she came over here just right after she was 19-years-old, and she, uh, did the mother, what you call it, mother, would you take care of the babies and things, what you call that?
Midwife.
Midwife, she was a midwife, all in this area. So she brought five children, one of them was my father, seven twins, one of those, I mean, no, the first two twins was, no, the first one was a, a lady, tell you, tell you young, tell you Sheffield, then the next one, seven twins, Ike and Henry were seven twins, the other, I, the other twins were one of those, sister, sister. She had those five kids, and we always raised up on my birthdate, we say Wausau, Florida. Wausau, Florida, on my birthdate, we are part of Washington County. Dad was part of Washington County all the way back from slavery time on up. So I'm here trying to get it closed out, y'all help me get it closed out. Chris, y'all know Chris, he's over in the Army Force. Everybody in the Ernest Earl family is dead, except his oldest sister. I know a guy moved in that family, the baby sister, he took her first and left the older sister, my age, he left her, so she the only one left. The house got burnt down, their home got burned down, so that's the reason she going to get this flag here, go give her the flag, but that's not all of it, I got two more things that got to come from this flag. I got to get the certificate, y'all know Chris, tell Chris to get some, he's already filled out a case, I can get someone, the certificate, we can get the flag out the way. And then the, the other thing is a plaque with his name on it that goes on the park. That's the other two things, it'll be closed out, the flag can be down, and that's, that that'll be the end of that. Now, the other, that's the end of that part that I wanted to present, the other part, anybody having a question about the flag and about the program, no? Oh, yeah, let me ask, let me ask you this, we're asking you, every year, we want that program to be perpetual, for, make sure if somebody don't do it, you do it, you know, make sure to have a program for that, for Washington County. Just like, oh, Monica, got it, got that memorial thing going, they just got a grant of $200,000 to set up that memorial thing, so we, we can do something for our area, just like Home County done, done for that. So I just want to interject that. The other thing that I want to bring to you is about what's going on here. We have disabled people in this, in this area, and I'm disabled. We have fire department out there, at least worth at least two, two million dollars or better, and I'm wondering about the second, um, I'm trying to say, the, uh, I wonder about the first offenders, the ambulance service, that's what I'm talking about, the ambulance service coming out of Washington County, not the, the county, the county always have purchased some land down there, that way to set up, uh, plays for the ambulance, but it's not working. But if they could get, have a little more unity, they could use Wausau, either, Wausau could use that, but they have to have grant money to get it done, but if you don't want to waste the grant money, they could use Wausau, you know, the ambulance, come out of Wausau to take care of this area, we just say, with the ambulance service, you know what I'm talking about? But not, it's still, build another place, yes, what ambulance service, they want to do that, money coming down from everywhere, they sell money across the water like, like this every day, so they can sell it down this way with grant money. If you understand what I'm saying, I've got to open that mic up, explaining it right. But you got disabled people out here, and, uh, they need to be helped service, because that'll take at least, if you're driving 100 miles an hour, it takes at least 10 minutes to get you. If you're driving 100, you can't drive, no 100 coming here, then when you get out to 10 minutes, everybody's dead, but here, just right in this area, we get there in a minute, maybe have a place where helicopters are going, you know, saying, help the fellow people, that's the, that's the other thing, that I was thinking about, the grant money that could be planned out, you have to work through organizations like that to do it. Maybe I'm not explaining myself right, but that's what I have over mine and interjected, being of God, not might be of God, but being of God, and maybe it's, maybe it would happen if God is in the plan, that's all I have to say, any questions?
If I understood your request of us tonight, you'd like for us to call, uh, Mr. Hyde, Chris Hyde, and ask him about the, uh, certificate for the flag.
And the plaque.
And the plaque, okay? Now, Mr. Hyde, we could, if we made that call, that's, it would just be a courtesy because he works for the Board of County Commissioners, and that, and that part belongs to the Board of County Commissioners, so.
That's right.
We can't, we can't do anything except be supportive of what you're trying to do, we can't make it happen.
That's all, that's, that's the point, that's all you can do, I understand, me and you both know what's going on now.
Yeah.
But that's, that's supported, you know?
Does anyone on the council want to speak to Mr. Sheffield? Do we have, do we have, uh, any problem, Margaret, Marc, you can just back and call up Chris.
But ambulance service, is it, is it?
I can address that a little.
An ambulance service?
Yes, I, I'm the city car chief.
Yes.
Okay. We, I, I.
If you would come up and introduce yourself for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Spad, I'm the town car chief. Uh, we've already addressed this, we've already went to the EMS department and asked them, offered our services, we have offered to give them a bay and use of our facilities free of charge, if they would put a daytime service here. So far, they've turned us down, there's a reason. They did the same thing with EMS, or at the emergency, uh, um.
Operations.
Operations center. And it was one of those things where they got along great until they didn't. Yeah, uh, they, this side had expectations, this side had expectations, and eventually they butted heads because one had more expectations than the other. And more, one asked more of the other than the other one didn't think they should have to provide. So they thought that it would be best just to not, and choose their own way as far as where they want to provide a station. They do want to provide a station in the center, um, however, Sunny Hills also, uh, opted to build another thousand homes within the next year, so they have to take that into consideration. So it's a possibility that Sunny Hills may get the next EMS center and not Wausau. That's up to Mr. Truitt to decide, and we're, we have no choice there. We can, our mayor can reach out again if he'd like to, and.
Question, is this, is, will also be a central location between Sunny Hills?
We are the center of the county.
Yes.
If anybody would have thought back then, whenever, instead of putting it in Vernon, they should have put it right here in Wausau, because this is the center of the county, this is where the county seat should have been sitting, in my view. However, you know, the, the other, the other people had different thoughts because of the railroad, I'm, I understand that.
If Washington, if Washington County was where you would be the hub.
Yes. However, the problem with it is, um, powers that be, they make decisions that's out of our hands, we are a town, we're not part of the county. County is a system, we're just a town, so that's.
And just a follow-up, that's all I was going to say, the EUC was made available, I've been retired 12 years, it was made available even before I retired, we, we invited. And to add to what, uh, Chief Smith just said, not only is Sunny Hills clearing ground as fast as they can for homes, uh, I'm on the planning commission, and we've just approved several land changes on down to Greenhead, it will be, it will be for the homes on top of the homes on top of homes. If, if, if the economy, if, if a lot of ifs take place, the, the infrastructure, I mean, the, uh, the land availability for housing is going to be tremendous in the south end of the county. We can make those calls and make those contacts, I'll be glad to, to do that.
I absolutely appreciate it, 100%.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I'll make a statement at Miss Carol Hiddings' meeting in May, when seconds matter, they're minutes away.
Yeah.
So, I mean, honestly, no matter where they leave, anytime you get a call, it's 15 minutes to get to Wausau. And I, that's why we offered our services, we're off the bat, and as soon as we got that building established, that was the first thing we come out with. And we asked them, we invited them, so far, they've turned us down.
Mr. Sheffield, we appreciate, we appreciate you taking the interest in the community as a whole to share that with us tonight, and we'll follow up on it, okay?
Okay, we, we can do what we can do, we deserve it.
Thank you, sir. Anthony Cornet.
Oh, hello, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, City Council. My name's, I go, I go by Andy Cornet, I'm the disaster program manager for the Red Cross here of this area of the six counties, and that's Bay, Gulf, Jackson, Calhoun, Washington, and Holmes. I've just gotten in, probably about 10 months been in the job, but I did come to my first possum festival just a week or so ago, met Mr. Wassonham, and he said, hey, why don't you come out and speak to the council? And I thought I would. Both of these prior fellows that spoke, all three of them actually, are right along what I, what I, or segueing what I want to talk about is volunteering. Uh, uh, I'm a 23-year honorary veteran, so I feel exactly what he's talking about, and, and Mr. Sheffield was an infantryman like myself, so I appreciate that, Vietnam, uh, so I appreciate that. And then, uh, I didn't know the fire chief was going to be at this meeting tonight, so I came out tonight just to talk about. So I came out tonight just to talk about how we can help the community. Uh, last year we installed, uh, over seven hundred, uh, smoke detectors, free. Everything with the Red Cross is free, so I don't have to say that anymore. Everything Red Cross does is free, so it's just off to the community. So last year we put about seven hundred fire, uh, smoke alarm, smoke detectors in homes within, uh, the northwest chapter. And that's Pensacola and Panama City and those, those ten counties. Uh, we also, uh, sent folks out to DAT responders, who gone disaster action team responders, out to over three hundred fires. And when we went out to those fires, we had volunteer, like Mr. folks were saying, we had volunteers that came out and helped those people in their worst, one of their worst days of their lives. And we gave them financial, uh, support, immediate assistance. And that was given, uh, by the, by the generous donors. What we, what we operate on is the three things, the talent, the time and the treasure of volunteers and donors. That's how we're able to do what we do. Uh, we're a ten percent employee, nine percent volunteer force. But I wanted to come out and tell you that, uh, as the new program manager, I, I tend to, I wanna be out more in my county and come see just what we can do for you all, how we can help, how we can best target areas that you wanna put smoke alarms in. And do, uh, situational awareness of hurricane prep, home fires, tornadoes, wildfires, you name it. We can do, we have all those programs, we can do free of charge. Uh, I'm prepared to leave my card with whoever I need to leave it with, I'm definitely leaving it with you, and with you, and with you. Uh, but I, I'm prepared to leave my card with the council. Should any of you need to get in contact with the Red Cross, call me first, I have a cell phone directly goes to me, the Red Cross gave me. You can call me anytime, I'll answer that phone and, and answer whatever questions I can for you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad I was able to speak today, thank you, sir, for inviting me out. I intend to be at the possum festival next year, and I'm gonna have a lot more people apparently, cause I sold it very well to my superiors and to my peers, so, thank you.
Bring a, bring a team or a trailer or something, set it down there, and we'd be glad to see you. If anybody have a question or a comment for Mr. Cornet? Is, is Morgan or Morsy the right place to leave the card? I think that if you believe we'll get there. If you leave with our clerk or with our deputy clerk here.
I will, I will, sir.
That we'll have, we'll have your information filed.
Thank you, sir, thank you for inviting me, thank you.
Anytime that you prefer, if I can come back.
All right, good evening, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak to us, who's an unattended audience? Carol, we said it last week, uh, last month, the name of which you are bad to have the friends back with, uh, Washington News.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Okay, we need to set a budget workshop. We need to set that workshop in conjunction with a special meeting. We need to do that on the twenty-ninth of August, if possible. Can I look at your calendars and see what you have?
What day is it?
Tuesday.
Two, four, five. Tuesday, what do you want?
Okay.
What time?
What time, starting your dog, what time do you need to be here? Do you need to be about four?
Um, I can try, I may be just a minute late, cause I don't get up till three thirty. And I wanna be in my, working from home, about that time.
Four thirty, yeah? You gonna be about four thirty?
Four thirty.
Four thirty, I can definitely be here by then.
Chief. Philip. Okay. Four thirty.
At that meeting, we'll also, uh, need to, uh, at the budget, we also need to have a meeting that night, cause we'll need to defer that grants or coming out and in. And they're due by August thirty-first, we just got notification today. So we gotta rush our newspaper, run our public hearing. But, and tonight I need to, a vote to, uh, set a meeting with the Citizens Task Force on that grant, and a vote to add Mr. Phillips to the list of Citizens Task Force members.
Okay, do we, do we have to discuss what this grant's for, or just do we rely?
This is a part, for that program, uh, what we're looking to apply for down there, with the council's permission, is we are in desperate need of fencing. Our fence are wore out, they need repaired, replaced. we need, uh, some, uh, work on the, uh, we need some more work on the ball field too, not a lot, we got new dugouts now. But, you know, the fencing is the major thing, you know.
Chain link fence that goes around the ball field, so what you talking about?
Right, across the park, yeah, around the park and around the ball field. The back gate, we gotta have a gate up there now for the back gate, that's what we can do, you know.
What about the fencing, we knew this and, uh, I can't call it the TD Smith brought in now?
Yeah, the, all that, the ball field trail, all that, all these big fences, it all goes back down there by the.
Runs into the storm?
Yes.
I, I, I probably knew this when I was put there, but how do you, is that, that'll go way through that storm and turn back on that old line, that old west line, is it?
That fence?
Yeah. Does it let in there for you?
I'm not sure, after Michael, I'm not sure, we got any.
We need, we need fencing, uh, do we need, how much do we need fence, sir? What, what does the council think? We need, we corner, our corner, our west line comes down, ISO horseshoe pit of, or, or the, have the pony rises to, goes into the storm and turns back to the east and comes down on, in there behind, uh, the Don Quixote House and the Smith house and there. Do we need, do we need this, do we need all of that fence? Uh, you can put fencing in order, but, uh, hopefully years, even that, even that chain link fence, uh, really is afraid. Of course, anybody, anybody gonna come to, come to the storm pit, to the property, they don't, they don't work for it anyway.
With these grants, they're fifty thousand dollar grant, uh, we have about forty-two thousand five hundred dollars of construction money. I believe we need to do down there.
Two thousand dollars for about a lot of things.
Well, a lot of things, but it may repair a lot of things, you know.
That's right.
We replace and repair.
That's right.
What would you need?
And we don't, that, all of that just gonna have to be chain linked, is it? None of that isn't, all of that's on chain link now, is it?
But we just need to motion tonight to, uh, apply for the first out grant, and advertise.
I'll make that motion. We have a motion to apply for the first out, first out grant for fencing, uh, at the, uh, at the Oplo Recreation Center. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, in discussion of motion?
How many grants do we have out that we have to pay on?
I mean, uh, do we pay it all, or? We haven't.
Grants are long, we don't pay up grants.
Okay. We don't have any. We can apply for two of these, but, you know, honest to goodness, we don't need anything else right now, George Rogers Park.
Yeah, grants are one of the things, but whatever, Mr. Savage, we said he, I mean, turkeys he brought home from the next election. But he never did bring any turkey for you. Them grants have to be maintained next year and next year and next year. To apply for a grant for the sake of applying for a grant is not necessarily good to him. With all respect to Mr. Rogers, and he, he deserves all our respect, but this second facility up here has just been an upkeep nightmare near about ever since we had it. We, that was a grant that they just give to you, if you write a letter and ask for it, and we need it, got it, and it's.
Cost test.
It's cost efficient, it has. Is there anything else at, not counting the legislative, uh, progression, we can ask for later, but is there anything else that we can use for that for down there? That, as much as has been done down there, that driving and parking area is still really, really bad.
We're gonna talk about that in just a few minutes here, uh.
When do I need to talk about the thing, uh, the seventy-five hundred dollars?
I don't know.
Okay, can that be part of that grant? I could add?
Oh, yes, yes, the honor, yes.
Okay.
If the development club doesn't wanna buy one for us.
And I haven't heard back, and I haven't heard back from Steve yet, they were supposed to discuss that Monday night. And I was gonna talk to us when we get that in my portion, but do it now or about hoping, you want to let it hold it?
Well, we can, you know, we can apply for the grant, and then put the elements in there, we can walk.
Okay, all right, then I'll, I'll call discussion that later, okay, will you?
We have your vote, ma'am.
Okay, all right, we've got motion second to grant, yes, sir. Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Sheffield, yes.
The court ranking and applications, let, this is back to that budget, and I've talked to most of y'all individually, if y'all come by, I've talked to you. Uh, we, we interviewed our applicants as twenty-eight hours per week. I have turned this budget every which way that you can turn it, to try to get twenty-eight hours a week for an additional employee. I can get twenty-eight, twenty hours a week, I can probably get twenty-one hours a week. But, you know, with a twenty-eight hour position inside and a twenty-eight hour position outside, I have got the inside position in budget balance on a twenty-hour person or a twenty-one hour person. On the outside person, inmate supervisor, we have advertised, we ain't got a solid, nothing on getting anybody to want to apply. If we had twenty-eight hour position here and a additional twenty-eight hour position outside with a, and I did what most of the cities and counties are doing, a four percent raise for the existing employees, and with the council, uh, the payroll for the town of Wausau with the tax, with the payroll taxes, and the match on retirement, would be around a hundred forty-six thousand dollars plus. I don't see how we can justify with a count of three hundred something people on our citizens to, to do that, to them. We're also in the water system, we've lost, of a one plot of the north of town, we've lost the four, uh, you know, four good paid water system people. We've lost some out on Coral Lane, we're, we're in the process of losing more, that we're not gonna gain back in any time very soon. That, you know, there's gonna be more on Coral Lane, there's gonna be more, you know, on Jefferson Street, there's gonna be more. You know, we've lost the one behind the Tom Tom, we're gonna lose one, some more behind the Tom Tom.
People just moving out?
They're moving them out, they're not gonna be in the rental business. They're gonna fix them up eventually and sell them, but that's, you know, when we have, and I'm not sure what, I think we bill out about two hundred thirteen customers now, when you take about, you know, the best I could figure, we're gonna lose about seventeen thousand dollars in the water system.
It just. Would've used twenty, but.
Yeah, seventeen thousand, yeah. And that's not something that we, you know, we raised those rates thirty-five percent last year. We, uh, we're gonna raise the rates five percent this year, but we can't pass that loss on to our citizens just to have an extra employee. Now, I did figure in, in the water department, an OPS employee, uh, for twenty hours a week for three months. You know, July and August is when we have the most grass. We could hire somebody for thirteen dollars an hour to mow grass and weed, you know? And we also have the option of Tim getting the inmates, you know, two or three days a week, you know? Uh, whatever he needs, you know, it's just, it just, the, the money is just not there. You know, our state funds are all up, we're getting more money for state funds. But when our insurance has went from, you know, twenty, fifteen thousand up to sixty thousand dollars is what we're leaving cities is, it is in your packet here, their proposal, you know? And we can cut our wind speeds and get our, uh, coverage down some, till, we'll save about, uh, maybe five to seven thousand dollars off of that sixty thousand. But if we do have a catastrophic event, it's gonna come in here, you know, and we're gonna be liable for a big deductible that we don't have.
Uninsured, or underinsured?
Underinsured, and I'm not sure how, you know, we've always had FEMA step in and help us, you know, but how long can FEMA last, you know? Our property insurance is thirty-five thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars per year. The rest are not too bad, our liability's fourteen, worthless comp's seven thousand, which is a lot for us, but that's, you know, we've had a big worthless comp company. Our, you know, our cyber liability's a thousand, you know, but.
And what exactly is that cyber liability?
Wait, it's required now for, Tyler, can you, cyber liability, what we gotta have, we gotta have, did they say?
It's our, isn't, isn't our internet and, uh?
Well, they said if we get hacked, and they send us a big, you wanna ransom us for ransom, you know? And they've had a few cities that's had it, I think.
They've definitely gone after smaller towns and cities that we've seen a lot of that.
Now, we have a name storm deductible is what it is. Option one is phones then, which is what we're, we've got here, is thirty-five thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars. Option two is seven point five percent, uh, which is thirty-one one oh six, and if we option three, ten percent, you know?
The two percent and five percent, ten percent is about eight thousand, or?
Yes, that's all, yeah. And a minimum of ten thousand dollars, whichever is greater, you know?
Or a minimum of ten thousand? Well, in the last, I mean, you have given us a loop there.
I've been a lot, but, you know, we're gonna have to work through this at the emergency workshop. This is probably the worst, except the time I called Hilton, and he told me, said, Ms. Harder, just make sure the last check you write is yours, and go cash it before it passes.
Uh, okay, did we have a workshop, we talked about it in the, the recap, but I don't know what we're thinking about. You're saying that, uh, uh, maybe, uh, Mr. can help us. Only with the inmates, would, if something happened on the work site, would, and, and they needed to go back to the compound, could somebody come get them?
I'm not sure how that would work, I mean, if somebody can't take them, and, you know, God's.
I, I knew there was, there's something on this, I talked, I saw Mr. Cooper, Sergeant Cooper, earlier in the week, and, and he was talking about, uh, redistributing inmates if we want, want to use them, and that we could do it several different ways and keep, keep, Tim could keep his card. Uh, my, my concern is, it, the days that Tim did, you know, two days, three days a week, whatever gets worse, he was the government, those days. If they mow it, if they clean the fences or ditches or coors or something like that, and he's washing it all, that's a good thing. But, but we can't have him down in a whole change of fixing a broken line, and then inmates standing around and wandering around in town or something like that. Uh, uh, and depending on what the emergency was, if we got an emergency in the office and they got Tim and said, we need you to do this, is it such an emergency that he has time to take them and then come back and do that? Or is it such an emergency that he's got to go do that? And that's what I'm asking, could somebody come get him then, because we can't, we can't have him not having his eyes on them, I don't think.
That's okay.
So, uh, I, 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 well.
It seems to me like if we have inmates, we need two workers, we need Tim, and then one more person.
We really do. Mark said we can't afford that.
Can't afford that.
But, uh, what, what things, Morgan, are we spending, you can ring back to the workshop, we don't have to interview Dale here, but what things are we spending money on that we did not do? I hate to cut out project graduation, I hate to cut out some things, once in a while, we can give them those, two, three hundred dollars or something like that. We're not gonna balance the budget on project graduation or, or some things like that, but, uh, if we can't, if we can't have the second person, we're gonna really have to make sure that Tim knows what we need him to do. You're gonna do these things so many days a week that you can have inmates to do it later. Trim defense lines, do you dig it, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, or if he don't have a breakdown, he can get him five days a week as far as I'm concerned. He can be there, and he can tell him to dig this hole, and here's the way you take a meter out and things like that. Those inmates can do a lot of things. County uses, they give them chainsaws, they give them weed eaters, they give them all kind of power equipment, things like that, teaching. Can they use, they give them chainsaws, they give them weed eaters, they give them all kind of power equipment, things like that, teach them, teach them how to do things.
They do most of the work.
They do most of the. Tim can teach them how to dig a meter out, how to put one in or something like that. But, to agree with you, I think the ideal thing would be have somebody for the inmates, Tim be your temp. That's my thing, but we can't do that, so we need to come back and think about it. The other thing you talked about was that we're gonna have to reduce the office, either reduce the hours or reduce the staff.
Yes, sir. Now, Marcy's position is 28 hours per week, and that water system, we need that 28 hours per week, you know. Which just, it's just a rotten hard life, you know. I mean, I worked 28 hours a week for 15 years, you know.
I know, but you think you work some of it.
I know.
I need you out here five days.
While we're on Tim, also.
Five days a week.
While we're on Tim, I also have talked, I sat down with him and I talked with him and, you know, I said, "Most likely, you know, come October 1st with the new budget, and with 77 starts, Labor Day week, you know, after Labor Day, holidays over, they're coming in here, starting rubbing, they're gonna start south into town." But, we're gonna need Tim here every day of the week. If our office is open at 8:04, y'all pay him for his lunch anyway, but when he does watch the inmates, he has to pay the lunch. I think he should go back two, five days a week from 8:04. You know, that way, when office is open, he's here, we should know what he's doing and what he's doing, you know.
People give him hours, we're just gonna, instead of 14, it'll be five days.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm good with that, I mean, he's gonna need to be here when they're digging up our water line, I don't know.
They're gonna fix some.
We're not giving him hours.
Is that gonna be here five days a week?
They're probably here seven days a week with him.
Yeah, and that, you know, that's something else, too, even if that, if they need him on Saturdays and Sundays, they'll call him. He can break the line, he'll be.
They're gonna, he'll have to be on site, so if they break the line, because it's our distribution system. But there, we have talked with contractors, we've talked with the state, we've talked with Metro. If they bust that line, if they break our line, that contractor's fixing that line. We don't have the manpower to fix every line when they go in it. But like I say, we'll have this end up on the 29th, you know.
Okay.
But that's, I just wanted to let y'all know that. And we also need to hire on the 29th, so we need to, if y'all vote to go to the 20-hour a week in the office, we need to contact these applicants to see if anyone's willing to work 20 hours a week.
Is 20 hours a week gonna be enough?
It's gonna have to be. It'll be enough for, you know, right now, Marcy's doing everything but balancing the bank statement and signing the check and meeting with grants people. She's doing everything in that office but that.
You almost need just one person, I think, in the office, running through Friday.
Four hours a week?
Yes. Instead of trying to divide it up into, this one's 20 hours, this one's 28.
But you also got to remember when COVID came through, you know, we had no backup, we had nobody to answer those phones, we had nobody to, not that they didn't call me, but, you know, we had nobody, when I had surgery, you know, I was out. Close to been out six weeks, I was out a week and a half, you know, but, and there's vacation, you know, they're probably not gonna do like I did, like take a vacation every, but, you know, there's vacation. You need a backup in that office, you need the separation that's taught us in the office, because you do have a lot of money here.
Anyways, somebody knows the system in case that person finds another job or moves out of the, we used to say in case they die, I don't know, right off the bat, then. They say in case they leave us or something. But if we had, I understand what you're saying, that's where we were many years with Jermaine and I and Gail and Margaret for a long time, I swear. I think what she's saying, and Chris, I think what, we can have one at 40 hours a week or we can have two with 48 hours a week. The difference is that second, that second 20 hours is gonna be, is gonna be, that second person's gonna be 20 hours extra for salary. Is that right? It'll be 28 hours hours that we already got.
And a perfect day would be probably 21 hours, that's seven hours a day for three days a week. And put one of those days on Friday, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you know, or.
I don't mind one day, or even two days a week, if we had one that worked, was off on Monday and one was off on Friday or something like that. But there needs to be some time where they're overlapping so they learn of each other's jobs.
Right.
Or. I don't know how to make those work necessarily. The only, if you did it that way, the only day that you have where they overlap would be on Wednesday. One where Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the other one where Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you can just have one day a week.
Well, one where Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. Your 28-hour employee would be a four-day week, that'd be two days, Wednesday and Thursday, they would overlap.
Two days overlap.
Two days overlap, yes.
Okay. That's, that's better.
Yeah. But, you know, for the second time, you know, that's what we're gonna discuss.
I haven't spoken to any of our applicants or candidates since the night we interviewed them. I know a couple of them have had desire of a 40-hour or desire full-time, and they've extended full-time to 40 hours, which is the standard for a week with us, full-time 28. I don't know if that makes a difference to.
Do we need to contact these applicants before we move them to the city office?
Yes.
I think so. In fairness to them, I would hate, we interviewed them at 28, which is, which is already less than 40, and then, I hate for them to show up and it's 20 and not 28 in, in, you know. And that's what we had to do. Do we agree with that? We need to, the parliament needs to call everybody and let them know that we're gonna have to go back to 20 hours for that second position. That'd be, that'd be a sure.
Is it gonna be said that it's gonna be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
That's a good question. I don't think we have, I don't think we have to say that today, but.
That would be negotiable, you know.
Yeah, that's on, that's on us, one day we want to do, on Sunday, that's on us.
And we're gonna give them 21 hours, right?
20 to 21, I got it balanced at 20, the budget is balanced at 20 hours. And you could have that person come in every day, you know, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, you know.
That, that 20-hour, that 20-hour person, they could work five, four-hour days or something.
Yeah.
We would, anyway. And that's gonna be the more administrative of the two positions, but it's gonna be the clerk, the more administrative, being here a little bit every day.
Would be the bench.
And keep, keep, keep things going and all of that, I, I, that's not a bad idea, Mr. Porter. Okay, anything else before we move to meeting for tonight? Okay, then I'm, I'm going to guess then, with that said, that next thing there, we'll hold it till, till we hear back from you?
Right now, yeah.
Okay, all right. Anybody got a question before we leave, I, I, this is confusion, though, if they will go, okay.
So, we're calling and telling them it's gonna be 20 hours instead of.
28.
28. But we're gonna wait to see if they still want the job before we make any choices.
Possum pay gonna be for these 20 hours?
1501.
When do they get a raise?
Next year.
In a year's time?
Question is six months for this as well as the river jump. Okay.
All right.
Not long, we're having so much fun.
We are, we've got the legislative appropriations. They want these applications back by November now, which I've talked with Jonathan, and I made an assumption, which I never do with the council, you know, but I did, and asked him to look at finishing the Possum Palace, that's our major project that we need to get done. But we do need a vote on that to, for Jonathan to fill out the application for legislative appropriations for the Possum Palace. And, you know, Mr. Abbott was at one day this year. If we could get our community facility, people, you know, on board with calling these legislators and representatives, you know, senators and representatives, you know. But to play that game, to get that grant, Adam can tell you, we worked tirelessly with those legislators and senators to get that for our house. There's gotta be letters wrote, you know, I got one from the Garden Club last year. I asked them for one from Adele Valton, but did not get one, just send anyone else like that. But, you know, everybody's gotta be on board with, you know, making these people know that they're here and that we need this, you know.
And these, these legislators, we hear, usually if it's in Pittsburgh, coming around to do a tour, and we get, we've been up there several years.
I have, yeah.
We get to go up there and talk to them face to face and usually meet in commissioners meeting room in Chipley. And I went several times to Mr. Yainer and Mr. Drake and several of them and while we signed yet the Possum Palace, we actually thought we had the whole thing and then the economy did its thing and we wound up. I, I think we all agree that that second phase of the Possum Palace is what we need to apply for, or if there is an idea from someone in the council.
And as far as I know.
That would only include you in the first phase? Completely doing the Possum Palace?
No, no, it is finished, the first phase is finished.
It is what it is. But isn't that correct, Jonathan, that, that we, you've already got this grant prepared, just about?
Yes, ma'am, I, I.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. Well, we, we tell them that in last year, in the 911, that we can, once the board approves, we'll submit that in, and we can roll that over, it should not be a problem at all.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council? I had to yell to the vice chair, make a motion, will you apply for, for that plant of grant for?
Let's say.
Legislative, uh, approachment for the second phase of the Possum Palace.
Do I hear second?
Okay.
Mr. Reitberg, how you doing?
Yes.
Mr. Ross, now?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Okay, also, we got their contracts, we signed our contracts on Jefferson Street and Jackson Street. We have the contracts from Deverie to sign for the legisla, for the engineered and design, or engineering and inspection process for that. They wrote this grant, they got this grant, we don't have to go, this is FDOT, they are the engineers of record with them. So, so we need to motion to enter into the contracts with Deverie on Jackson Street and Jefferson Street projects.
Hey, Ms. Moore, can I make, can I make a statement?
You can.
Um, I, I heard you said helps with design and inspection, and it's for survey and, uh,
Surveying.
Deverie designed, but we can't expect, so you have the help, so we have to expect, and that's for survey and for, uh.
Okay.
Okay, we need a motion to enter into contract for survey and design with Deverie for our Jackson and Jefferson Street paving projects.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, there's a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hey, Mr. Reitberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfman?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Ward? Yes. Chair votes yes.
All right. Y'all asked me to go out for RFPs on, and RFPs on audit and services, we're going to open those. I'm gonna hang this one, open those and see what we have. Our companies are Grimsy and, Grimsley and Associates, McDaniel and Associates, and Car Riggs and Ebron. Car Riggs and Ebron, they're now, they've been ours for, I know, 27 years.
Okay, the first one that I've opened is Grimsley and Associates. And I think there should be just a cover sheet someplace to give us the bottom line.
Base annual audit fee is on Grimsley and Associates is $14,000 with a single audit fee, $2,200 per major program. And I'm assuming that means for every grant that goes in.
The grants.
Yeah. Additional service will be partner 150 an hour, manager senior 100 to 125 an hour, and staff 75 an hour.
And that's from?
That adds up to a lot.
Well, that, that's like if we called them and asked them to do some of this outside the scope of the policy. Sometimes, sometimes we've had to call Hilton.
Hilton won't charge us nothing for that.
They helped us in budgets and times and things like that, that some of the changes in legislation, some of the changes in law, they would have been hurt, those laws and things like those. But the base audit fee is $14,000. That's on, and I think it's one of these for each of you.
Yeah, it's that paper down here.
And that's on page three. On page three, you'll find the cost of these, the copy of what we're looking at. Okay, the second is, the second is McDaniel and Associates. Is that at the Marianne office?
Yes.
What book are these for?
I don't know, I think.
I don't know.
McDaniel, I think. Well, I really think, you know, that we might not pick these tonight simply because we haven't looked at the proposals, you know, to see what they're offering. Apples, apples, and oranges on here.
Okay, on this, on page seven, you'll find the, you'll find the minutes. On page seven, the audit management letter and out-of-pocket expenses, total, I'm guessing this is what they call basic, this is what they're calling it, just total. It's $20,000. Single holiday report is required, $6,000 per major program, as opposed to 22, the other one. And their position rates are really high. Partner 385, supervisor 200, senior staff 175, staff 150.
Plus the reimbursement, we require reimbursement of out-of-pocket expenses, travel, meals, and those up to $1,500.
Okay, but that's, that's included, I think, up here, not, I suppose, the out-of-pocket expenses, see below.
See below, I was thought it.
That's, that's the definition of it, so that would be added to, up to 15, that would be added to the 20,000. So that becomes 21,000 in reality. So that becomes 21,000 in reality. You put any two of these in though?
I got them, yeah.
Okay, you want them? Don't let it sit down, it'll fire burn from around you.
I'll say that again.
Page showing 22, that really is. Actually, last, the last page, the first page from the bag. Financial statement, audit $25,000, single audit $7,500. And then the classification rates is nearer to the first one. Partner 180 to 240, manager 110 to 150, supervisor 90 to 130, staff 75 to 100.
Like I said, we need, we need to compare these apples to apples, you know. Our reasoning or maybe more, but they have supported us through the years and, and they just-
Will, can you stand 27 years?
Yes.
Okay. What about these other ones?
They need, they're, they're just something they were proposed to us.
Okay.
Grimsley, used to be Grimsley and Calvin, I think.
They were with Carr Riggs and Ingram, or Grimsley Calvin?
I'm not sure.
I don't know.
They used to do the counties, over Grimsley. But they have, they have several of the years as well, too. Saltmarsh, Cleveland, and Gooden was doing, was Waltz Hall when I first heard that. And he's, there's some onlookers came, and I'll just take mine and give it to you.
So we want a motion to accept in the record and approve.
Does anybody have a question or do we discuss this further now before we look at it?
Oh, well, we'll discuss this in the workshop.
It'll be a workshop for the budget, a meeting for everything else. These will be selected off the 29, along with selected the cars, along with selected everybody.
Is that a good way to approach it? That we take these to the 29?
Set, I mean, a motion to set-
We need a motion to type.
To accept in the record and-
Except, except for the record and whatever she says.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Reitberg?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Or, yes, chair votes yes.
And we don't discuss the maintenance problem and then we make supervisor?
Well, on the, on the, on the maintenance department, did we discuss the, we discussed the apparent problems that we've got with communications and showing up and clocking in and clocking out, checking in and checking out, did we, did that got any better?
It's got much better. I sat him down and talked with him for probably 45 minutes. And I talked with Marcy, she says much better, he's coming by, he's answering his phone calls. They had a discussion on, you know, that if she calls him one time, give him time to answer, you know, before, you know, they're working some things out with each other and I think it's, I think it's a lot better. Whether it's gonna stay a lot longer, I don't know yet, we'll see. But I think also changing the hours will help a lot, you know. Cause, you know, he's supposed to be here at 6:30 in the morning. I don't get here on Saturday, Marcy doesn't get here till eight, so we have no clue what time he actually gets to the town hall. But if we're here at eight and he's supposed to be here at eight.
Well, if it, if it helps things, we can change those hours tonight, we don't have to wait until the new budget here, we can change those hours anytime we're ready. That don't change how many hours he works, it just changes-
I'll give reasonable time to reset his schedule, you know, what he does on Fridays, you know. I was thinking, you know, if we, they even know he's gonna be going to eight in the morning.
Yeah. Need to live though and do it on the 29th, or you still waiting, you still thinking to wait till you-
No, I'm fine with that, I was gonna do it, come back, you know.
Did we ever download the 360 app on the city's phone?
We are working on that, we need a city phone to do, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna be here to put it on my phone. And Marcy's not comfortable with her personal phone having Tim's location on it, you know, all the time. So we're going to get a government plan for a phone, which is included, and put it on. Now, I have it on mine for my granddaughter, everybody in the family, they've got 360. Cause Eddie Turkey knows a lot about it. But we're-
Marcy wants to say something.
I was just gonna say, I'm here to the Verizon and Chipley and they don't do government plans. So my plan is when I'm in town tomorrow, they said that you have to go to the Panama City office to do the government plans. And since I'm already gonna be in Panama tomorrow, I'm gonna do it while I'm over there.
You might check with AT&amp;T, too, I don't know if they offer anything special, but I know that they have like a first responder, a thing called FirstNet, and they give you a big discount through that, so they may have something in them, too.
Well, they can't be in the office, you know.
Okay, so, so when we have a chance to tell him that, if, do we want to do that? I'm just talking under assumption, do we want to go to the five ages and, and have him start in the office and stop in the office?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
But you need to give them out.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I was pushing, I'm really seeing something done, this is what I'm gonna do. I never have worked on jobs where what I didn't answer to somebody.
Yeah, yeah.
It may have been everyone who was-
Free rate, I think.
It may have been somebody else, but I always, I always, I always had a place where I started and where I'm starting.
And I told him the other day, I said, we answered to five people, but in reality, we answered to 405 people because everybody in this town is watching, everybody, yeah. And it's not like y'all are retiring, working set to death, they were made, they don't show people that, they're more than a shot, they saw them, but help the work, you know.
Those months were the people back there.
Have you seen, have you seen one there?
They, that's a thing to do, there's plenty of them, there's plenty of things that are subbed in from outside, okay, let's all round, shall we? Oh, is this a place to talk about the, any helpless down there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if some of you, well, I'm sure remember, some, a few months ago, early in the spring, Pastor Burner from the Waltz Hall Assembly of God gave our indication, and on Lincoln, he said, if there was ever anything that they could do to partner with the city to do things, just improve the city and improve our facilities, something like that. Their churches voted to build a shelter over one of the handicap parking places down there. You know, that last spring, we got those two places on the east, on the west side, two cement slabs out there, market hall and all that, but they're under trees. And if you're bringing in a parent or a child or somebody on a walker wheelchair and all that, and you try to load and unload in the rain, you know, it'll be getting wet, you're getting everything out of the tree, we'll probably be too, getting wet and duck wet. And the churches voted to build one of those. I asked the development club, would they, would they consider that, and told Mr. Taylor, and he said he would bring it up, but tonight I haven't heard from him. But I just want everybody to know that we have, we have one that is committed to, and is it all right for me to pursue other courses of places that we can find?
Just two spots, I've got, they need to-
We just got two spots, yeah. I'd asked Margaret, and this is before she had done the budget, because I didn't know what was the transportation fund or anything like that, I thought we might build one and the church would build one. And they, they, I asked, they asked me to build both of them, and they, they could build, they could build one at this time, so if we can, and if I don't get the second, do you want me to pursue the first?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Well, what I will, what I will do with that then is call the pastor back and tell him to do that. And I need to be very open with all of you. My son always will be able, he goes to the church and does much of their remarking, and he's the one that gives the materials, the prices, and all that, and gave it to the church. And they will, they will use him, and I'm assuming is there any, if they would use him, that's all right.
He's their partner.
He's their partner. It won't come through our books, we don't have any responsibility for it. And I'm declaring that as part of having a personal gain, but I don't even wanna help anything. In a small town like this, you're either kin to everybody, or you're not kin, or you thank y'all, you, you got to kin to everybody. So if it's all right, I'll tell pastor that they can begin one of those and-
How much is it all cost?
The two of them would have been 1,500. So he, he said, said they would do one, so I'm guessing 75 to 75, you know. I think 15,000, you know, thank you, you owe me 15,000. So it'd be 7,500, 7,500, so.
For a shelter? Is it all in?
Like if the church has it there over there.
And what kind of concrete slab?
Yeah, it's already on concrete slab, it'd be kinda like, but I don't know what it'd actually gonna be.
Kinda like what they have already out there, like what they have at the church already.
Yeah, up there, they're all-
It may be like that. It may be like they have- At the Assembly of God church here. You know, they have offices out there apart from there.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be like that.
I don't think so.
That catches the rain, takes it to a gutter, it's just, it's just a shelter. I think he's talking about something with pitch, you run the water down a gutter out into the street, I think. Like a pole borer, like miniature, like miniature pole borer. Okay?
I have one more thing I have for Biden.
All right.
Steve Hallmark has turned in his resignation. He's offered to volunteer if we get enough kids to play ball, to, you know, volunteer in that position, but he's resigning his position as recreation director effective today. And to tell you the truth, I have not booked to be the recreation director in the budget for this year.
Well, I think, I think, personally, I think that's a smart thing to do, of course. The kids, if you go in Waltz Hall and see the kids, they either go to Chipley or Burner and, you know, I think, I'm glad to see him turn in his resignation.
Sure.
And not that he hasn't did a good job, but I'm just glad to see that taken care of on him. That's my, that's my opinion, you know.
This year's not been his best year or the town's best year, as far as that's concerned. And I think he's probably kinda talked this around, I'd known it, and actually I talked to James Allen over the Funday week and things like that, and he might be interested in coming back, but he said he was not, he's, when he retired, he also retired with the social security, so he couldn't, he couldn't make lots of money, so if he wanted to-
We don't mind that.
That's exactly what I did. If he was to come back as a volunteer and get, get Mr. Phillips to head him volunteer, we could still have, we could still have a program, but, you know, volunteer, if somebody said you can't fire a volunteer, you, you really cannot use them, but also sometime when you get a volunteer, Mr. Phillips, you'll learn this if you haven't read it, they can be leaned on pretty, pretty heavy sometimes, and we wouldn't want to do that. But I think, I think not budgeting for a director's view, if we start getting parents that wants to come in here and say we bring our kids, bring our kids, and we will-
Well, yeah, we did.
They said we will recommend that to, they said we will recommend that to bring on them.
I'll look along this here. But I need a motion to accept his resignation.
Do I hear a motion to accept the resignation of the parks director?
I'll make that motion.
How about motions or seconds?
I'll second it. Go ahead.
Got a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Ms. Reitberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
And chair votes yes.
I got it.
Okay, anything else that, one more thing.
No, sir, I think that, Marcy, am I missing anything? The one? Yeah, we talked about that one. I think that's it.
Okay, Mr. Ward, anything?
I don't have anything.
All right, Ms. Carter, anything?
No, I'm good, I'm just taking care of it.
All right, Mr. Wolfson, have anything?
No, for sure.
Ms. Reitberg, anything?
I just have, well, I was wondering, what, what's the update on the equipment missing from the skate park?
Washington County says that that skate park equipment, the Phoenix Springs is claiming it. That we thought Steve was sure it was ours, they said everything of theirs is bolted down, but according to the deputy that's investigating that, they're still pursuing it, but right now the Phoenix Springs is claiming it.
So is that something that was loaned to us or?
No, it's our grant.
That's ours, and Steve went there and it may be broken, and I'm talking after Steve, I didn't go. It may be broken down now, but it wasn't when he went over there.
Right.
And we took pictures, we got, the pictures matched the fishing equipments there. We was told that it was there by a user of the park, that it was our equipment, and somebody drove off with it.
This is heavy stuff now, they have to, you know, afraid of some, you know.
Yeah, yeah, that, that part makes sense, that they did, it wasn't easy to move. But I don't understand how they did that now, they don't, they don't, there's a way to do much of things.
If you want steel.
Yeah.
Is that correct, am I thinking correct, or do you know anything about our, you're not familiar with that? I'll check again with Jason Cook and see where, you know, where we're at with that.
Ask him, can he send us something or be at our next meeting, maybe not for tonight, but our next regular meeting. And also ask Mr. Carter, is he, did we have, I mean, we're not fixing to get into souvenir if you have a thing.
No.
But if they got our, they got our equipment, we need it.
Yeah, we want it back.
We need it back.
All it needs is to give it back to us.
At him.
Well, yeah, so I took it to Sunny Hills one time to their skate park, we just went down there, looked it up on our trailer and brought it back.
Yeah, we've already had, already had something one time, we've had-
It's a long deal.
Yeah, so it can't be moved.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
And I was wondering, too, if you could make us a list of reoccurring bills and how much we pay, like, you know, things that are set, like a set amount that you pay for whatever?
Now, like, are you talking about utility bills, like every, every month, or we pay a utility bill every month?
Well, no, I mean, I know stuff like that, I mean, stuff that is like a set amount.
Like?
Like you pay so much for your-
Internet.
Internet and so much for, you know, certain programs that we use, that kind of thing. So that we, you know, kinda have something to look at.
Yeah, recurring bills, I can do that, like, like the attorney, you know, we pay attorney $600 a month, we pay Mr. Rester $1,600 a month, we pay-
Did you figure him in the budget?
He figured in there, so we ain't got a bite or a nibble on him, I guess, well.
If that's something we-
You said it's a two-week school? Tomorrow morning?
No.
That's something we sure, the town, in my opinion, need to come up with something a lot lower than $1,600 a month, and I'm speaking for myself now.
I agree with you.
You know, I don't, I don't even see him around, I mean, or-
He comes three days, he said he tell y'all, he comes three days a week?
He does?
He does, he has to, in one, in visit a month, he has to. He takes all samples, the monthly samples, the intermittent samples, we have a lot of samples that we have to report on that water system. If we have a leak, he's our distribution operator, too, he has to be on site the entire time of that leak, from start to finish, to a budget back in the system. He does a lot that probably y'all are not aware of, you know, but yes, I do think it's, it's a little excessive, you know, but.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm learning, so I, you know, I just don't, I, you know, the time that I spent with the Forest Department over in Santa Rosa County, you know, we, we had a job of doing that ourselves and nobody died that I knew of over there.
But that's a little different than.
Any of us, any of us, you know, so I don't know, I'll be fine.
But he takes all the bacterials and he, you know, uh.
He comes three days a week and how many hours a day does he stay?
Oh.
How many is it, twenty hours a week he's here?
Oh, no, man, no, he comes to make a visit, he checks the chlorine, he, he works on our chlorine, chlorinators, he keeps them going, uh, to make sure the levels arrive of all things. Uh, some years we have a list of samples to move, some years we have a few samples to move. Every year, uh, we have to send our monthly reports to, uh, they come to us, they come to the state of Florida, they come to D E P and they go to our management. But, uh, what we pump out of these wells monthly goes.
When he, when he comes, he stays an hour or two, if that's what it needs, he stays all day, if that's what it needs. The sixteen hundred dollars of land fee, every, how many hours we need, that's how many hours it's here.
That's something we gotta have.
If he has to come out in a break now or something like that, he has to get up for that too. And really, when you pay him something like that, it's, uh, you pay for that, pay for that. He's a paper, he's got, he says he's a certified.
He's a class A.
He's a class.
Would we keep him paid by the hour?
No, no, man. We don't get him by the hour, you know?
There's somewhere actually we got to have, sixteen dollars a month, so.
Sixteen hundred dollars. Um, it's something we have to have, we have to have a licensed operator on our plans.
That's a good fashion somebody go into, I'd say.
And I don't buy soliciting some of the operators that work contracting, I didn't see if they would give us a program on what they were doing for, you know?
You know that.
I think you should do that.
I like that.
I can do that.
I like that, I'm sure.
I got a couple that might be interested, they have not put in a bid, you know, because, you know, they get a contract, they do, they work their regular job and then they do this, you know, this contract, you know?
Where is this kind of stuff advertised at?
We advertise on our website and we advertise on one stop. Now, operators, we'd have to go out, like, we put this in the newspaper, we have to put it in our local newspaper, you know? But there's, uh, there's one at the prison, that works at the prison, I expressed interest in putting it in a, in a bid, you know?
Well, actually.
But I hadn't put in yet.
I don't wanna know who it is anymore, it used to be, um, Finch.
No.
Jimmy Finch, yeah.
It's Randall Weekly, that was at the prison.
Randall, Randall, right?
He was at Sunny Hill.
My goodness, I don't know that I knew that yet.
And, uh, Jimmy Cook in Vernon also does some contract, you know, with smaller cities, you know?
Yeah. He's been, he's been burning a long time too.
What do you say about rehab town?
They have their own staff, he does, I don't know if he does it, it should be do.
I think a town clerk should be certified.
We try to send our guys to get certified, but you have to have thousand, like, thousand hours or more on plant experience, and you can't get it in a hundred years working on itself.
Yeah, yeah. Jimmy was at Chipley before, he was, he was on staff at Chipley before he went to the prison, I think.
He was, he was at the prison for a long time.
He was staff operator there.
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay, let me, uh, Margaret, do you know when the last time we had a meeting with, about fuel tax distribution? We have to do that every few years with Washington County and, and then our, our amount of revenue goes up depending on how much we spend and you spend it on paving and all the paving and stuff that we did, uh, or maybe fixing to do ought to increase our, our revenue from the sales from that fuel tax distribution.
It's not reflected in our estimates for the local auction. We're getting like a thousand dollars this year, Uncle up and down. We've always got about three hundred something dollars a month, you know, for local auctions.
Yeah.
And it's since, uh, I guess since, uh, the COVID and all, it just went down and I don't know if the county done that or who's done that, but it's down to like seventy-nine dollars a month we get for local auction gas.
Yeah. You might want to call, uh, Johnny Patis or, uh.
Risha.
Risha, uh, Risha might, I think, uh, I know that it's, it's much better with Johnny or Risha one, I'll be able to tell you the last time that, uh, distribution formula was vested, and made it happen, committed it. Fuel tax distribution, the shed, that's the two things I had, and, uh, I don't know if we can talk openly in front of Margaret, but I don't know how we're gonna do it if we don't. She's coming to the end of the road and, uh, we need to do, have appropriate farewell for her. Um, and, uh, what you want to plaque to say, Margaret?
Why don't you say the plaque?
Uh, and, and plaque is not, I mean, twenty-seven years of plaque is not all we can do, we can do, whatever the council might want to do, uh, as long as, you know, we've only left them this year to do, as I logic, I'm just kidding. We want to honor her and, uh, and, uh, what do we want to do? Do you want to excuse herself and, okay, what, what, uh, do we want to do it in the course of a rig or meeting now or because it's as special as it is, do we have a time to decide where we come back and do something else or?
We don't need it now. He said no more meat, no more.
You almost spread the banquet table and have steaks and stuff like that.
That was like good, yeah.
There'll be a lot of people around the community that come.
I would hope that would.
They will.
I would hope that we, uh. I told Nancy when we got out a while ago, this is, this has been made very R F D just about it and I see that changed and we, we see, there's nobody in Walsall, hardly this front Walsall anymore.
Definitely not.
Nobody in Washington County, this front Washington County much anymore. And, uh, our, our complexion, our nectar is when we change and some, but, uh, I would hope that people would come, Margaret, Margaret's home. Last night, say. What, what, now, uh, no, that I wanted to mention this to the council, I, I took the liberty, if it's all right with y'all, uh, to ask Marcy, can she plan us something? And she said that she can and can get some help or whatever, is it all right for her to begin that preparation and?
Remember we looking at dough in the, since your last day, Margaret?
Yeah, well, that's, 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 that's on my, on my.
I, I don't, I thought you was leaving it into fifth year, that's.
Yes, I thought.
I don't, I don't know what you're, if you got a date in mind.
One year, September, one year.
Twenty-twenty-three.
You sure you wanna do that?
No, I'm not sure at all, you know, but.
When is your last day?
It'll be the last Thursday and, uh.
Or the last of September? Last Thursday, September?
Yeah.
Twenty-fourth.
I was twenty-eighth.
Twenty. Last, the third Thursday.
Our meeting, our meeting, our meeting is the third, our meeting is the first and, and that may be.
Let's have it that way.
Have it your that meeting.
Twenty-first, yeah.
And I really from my part, Margaret, wish that our budget and other things would let us give you an elaborate, uh, thing, you know, five, five years.
Roger, when you see me, I am no fluff and puff.
I know, I know, I know.
You thought, but you thought that was about.
They, they, they just some things that needs to be recognized and, uh, uh, that's the way I used to be when I worked, I'd, I'd go off to these committees and all I had and give my name in the paper, my official paper, my ideas or something like that. I wasn't doing that. That staff that worked for me was doing that and, and they hardly ever got recognized. I tried to make one every time, we'd get something about the people that's back, the people that's back home that's there and I, and I want to do that here, but.
Lynn used to say Roger was, had a cough, was saying every time I hear her, can hit.
Yeah, she worked on that, her.
I think it would be all right if we come in and talk to Marcy about what we're gonna do tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should have Marcy plan.
Yeah.
And she could plan, well, we would.
Give her.
Your suggestions, yeah. And let her plan.
Do we want to give, she may even have a suggestion, do we want to give some kind of gift rather than a plaque?
Please.
We need to give a gift card of some kind.
Rather than plaque?
Oh, I think a plaque, do we, you know?
But something, yeah.
Well, let's, let's give a plaque with the year she worked on and that was the town. They give her all the year and then a gift.
That's them, that's, that's them, that's the gift. Yeah. Marcy, you want to give you enough, uh, direction that you could sort of work on something?
Do we have the caterer or, are we having the caterer or?
We're not going to let her, that's had a caterer.
Yeah.
Not like she like it. Not like, not like she like it with the same one, we shouldn't get it.
There's a, there's a guy, there's a guy that lives over on Washington Street that just like to volunteer different things and, uh.
She could do a meal.
And he, he probably got some contacts and they can, uh, help us and, and I know you're not a, I, I, let me, I'll just talk to you, I know you're not, uh, you know, wearing yourself a while ago.
Fluff and puff.
Yeah.
My sister is.
If we did, if we did, uh, if we did a standard reception, fruit vegetable trays, finger foods and things like that, so you feel ringed on, you feel neglected if we.
No, not, yeah.
If we get it simple, we keep it simple.
Keep it simple.
Keep it simple, okay, okay.
I care more about this town than anything elaborate, you know?
Uh, as to, uh, packing the gift card, uh, I don't know how we do this without violating the sunshine when we leave the mountain, that gift card, um.
I can tell you what we done for Sam. Sam and Wayne have more than I do, you know, serving this town.
Okay.